Good evening. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend on Monday, October 7th. We recognize a quorum of our Licensing Board here tonight. Our first item of business is the regular meeting minutes from our September 9th, 2024 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingsheim and Alderman Butchlick. Any corrections? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our only item of business tonight now is a new Class B beer license for Capital Tacos Express LLC. The application is in our packet, and I know our police department did their due diligence on this, and Chief is recommending an approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingsheim. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and I will adjourn our Licensing Board meeting.
I would like to call to order the City of West Bend Board of Public Works for October 7th. We have approval of minutes for a regular meeting September 9th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen and Second.
Second.
Alderman Zingsheim. Any questions or deletions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried.
Item number two, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, W-23-04-40-Bank. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This is our typical stormwater maintenance agreement that we enter with property owners once they are issued a stormwater management permit. This one is for a development for 40-Bank at 555 Wildwood Road. The project consists of construction of the new building, mass grading, asphalt drive, concrete walkway, utility improvement, and the stormwater management facilities, which include underground storage and filtration trench and a basin. This agreement, as usual, is specific to the property, and it is to ensure that the improvements will be installed as intended and will be maintained so that it can function properly in the future. It is an agreement between the city and the property owner that complies with our MS-4 permit requirement, and we recommend approval of the agreement.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen?
Second.
Alderman Schmidt? Any questions for Max? There are no questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Max. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as Chair.
I call to order the Finance Committee for October 7th, 2024. We have nine-ish, eight-ish agenda items. The first one is the, we are going to skip over the Finance Committee approval minutes of June 3rd because those have already been approved, and move on to item number two, approval of the regular meeting minutes from September 9th. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Zingsheim. Any comments, questions, additions, deletions? Otherwise, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The next item is item number three, the 2025-2027 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of West Bend and the West Bend Police Supervisors Association. Having been a part of the collective bargaining committee, I am pleased that we have reached an agreement with the Police Supervisors Association. Some of the highlights of that include some revised language to overtime and union activity, expanded residency requirements, which will help with not only recruitment but also retention of our police supervisors, which expands to include Washington County and all counties adjacent to Washington County. So that's significant, particularly as it relates to recruitment for our, for police supervisors. Wage increases for each of the years of the contract, as well as one step, removal of one step in the ranks, and a new health insurance plan that decreases and decreases in employee premiums. Overall, we are very pleased with the, with the agreement we had reached with that Police Supervisors Association. I think it does well in ensuring that they are being compensated very competitively within the region. They're not the top by any means, but they are far from being the bottom, and I think that's important so that we continue to maintain a high quality of police supervision within our department and within our community. I don't know if, Mayor, you have any additional comments, or Administrator Chambo?
I don't. It was, it was a pleasure working with the Supervisors Union, as Matt said, and I think we came to a nice, through your agreement there.
The full contract was included within the agenda packet, within the confidential section. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve that collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Bend and the West Bend Police Supervise Association.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you very much, Alderman Berquist and Alderman Allen. Any questions or comments?
Alderman Allen?
Yep. Do you know where relative to the top or the bottom of the range the contract came in?
That's a really difficult question to answer, Alderman Allen. When you say the range, I assume you mean our comparables?
Comparables.
Municipalities. There's, there's, there are a lot of variables that go into that. There are many components to a contract, and I think Alderman Sternig hit it on the head when he said we're not, we're not likely to be the top with this agreement. We will not be the top with this agreement, but we'll also be far from the bottom. I think that's a fair point, so.
Upper third.
Again, depending on the comparables chosen and depending on all of the nuances of the varied contracts between the municipalities, among the municipalities, that's, again, it's a really difficult item to nail down, but it's a, Mayor and Alderman Sternig hit it on the head. It's a positive result from a really successful negotiation and one that we're excited to bring forward to you and recommend adoption.
Any further questions? We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item for consideration is item four, 2025-2028 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of West Bend and the Local 2025 International Association of Firefighters, Very, very similar in nature to our police supervisors' contract. We had a very successful negotiation with the firefighters' union. We increased the contract from three years to four years. We have wage increases for each of the years in the contract. I think one of the, one of the largest changes within this contract is the establishment of a 48-96 work schedule, which is 48 hours on, 96 hours off, and that is something that the union was overwhelmingly in favor of moving to and brought to us. So that is something that we are, we are going to establish on a one-year trial basis. We've removed some language for unpaid, for on, language unpaid on-call firefighters and some additional cleanup throughout the course of the contract, and they too have new health insurance plan and decrease in employee premiums. Their contract was overwhelmingly ratified by their union. Again, this is a contract that I think puts our firefighters in a very, very competitive wage situation when you look at the region. In doing so, again, not at the very top, but far from the bottom, and I think from that perspective also as it relates to the taxpayers of the City of West Bend, it's not something that we were uncomfortable with as we were bargaining with them as it relates to ensuring that they have a fair wage and fair compensation so that we are able to recruit, again, and maintain top firefighters and keep them within our fire department for years to come. They too have the, correct me if I'm wrong, they too have the increased, expanded residency to include both Washington County and all adjacent counties, which is going to be critically important as we continue to recruit, as we expand our fire department. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2025-2028 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of West Bend and the Local 2025 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you very much, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Allen. Any questions or comments as it relates to this?
I saw in the 48-96 that the first year is, is a test. I assume that unless it's not working out for the city or it's not working out for the firemen, it will simply stay in effect for the remainder? Is there, would we entertain removing that 48-96 scheduling if it showed, you know, three months down the road, it's not working out?
I wouldn't say that we would, and Chief or Jay, you can comment on that.
Sure. It's, it's, the way it's written is it's by mutual agreement, so it will be a year-long test, and then both entities, the, the union and the administration, would agree or disagree to continue it. I, I think all individuals involved are anticipating it's going to continue, with other municipalities that have adopted this 48-96 schedule have kept it, and it would be difficult to untwine once it's been put in place. That's what we've been told.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Alderman Sparts.
I was gonna say, a 48-96 schedule was coming, coming, coming on strong when I left, and I think they're probably gonna like it. They were pretty adamant they wanted it, so I think it'll work. It's, it's used otherwise, other places in the country, and people that have it love it. I don't know if I would have liked it or not. Haven't tried it, so.
Thank you very much, John. All those, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The fifth item agenda is a resolution for urban forestry grant. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we are requesting approval of a resolution for an urban forestry grant. This is a DNR grant, a 50-50 grant that will support several urban forestry programs within our community. Those programs include the final development of our urban forestry master plan, continued staff training, and the largest component would be the support of our annual street tree planting program. So this grant would help offset some of those costs. The total project cost is approximately $55,000. The grant request is $25,000. That is the max grant request that we can, request that we can look for. The city matching funds would include operating funds, existing funds, and our street tree planting, budget, capital, and capital funding. We have successfully applied for this grant in recent years to help offset some of our operating costs and some of our tree planting costs that we do on an annual basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you very much, Alderman Zingsheim and Alderman Sizer. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
I'd just like to say, it's a great.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I think it's a great program. I had a constituent come up after the Alderman Free Coffee at the library stating they wanted more trees, so this is great for it.
Wonderful. Thank you, John. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Alderman Butchlick?
Mike, how are we doing as far as replacement of the, the diseased trees that we lost over the years?
Emerald Ashport, I can say we've replaced that amount and more. The biggest aspect of our tree planting program on an annual basis is the year we'd always follow up after our road construction projects, like next year we'll be Hawthorne and things like that. We follow up after that road construction's done, and then we fill all the vacancies on those roads. So all Emerald Ashport trees have been replaced over the last 10 years, and we are going even beyond that, and again, the, our road construction planting's been very, very positive with our residents. Laurel Drive North and South, those residents were very pleased when we, we sent them letters to follow before to say, hey, your road's been recently constructed, next year we're gonna be planting some trees out in front of your house, things like that. So the Emerald Ashport trees have been replaced, and our growth continues mainly in our road construction areas or our, some maple trees and things like that will die throughout the year. That's part of our free street tree program, so our residents, they really, they like this program a lot. And we'll be coming before council, possibly the 21st of October, for permission to bid our contract for next year, because we always want to get it out as soon as we can, to get good costs and get on the contractor's list and things like that, so.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Next is a resolution accepting Walmart Spark Good Grant. Chief and Chief, welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is a reoccurring grant. We'd like to first without, so I don't forget, is give a special shout-out to John Fitzgerald. John is the manager at Walmart. After we talked about the first implementation of this grant, John and I and our team started talking about how he could be more involved in the, the community and supporting public safety. I'm happy to report to you that since then, John went through the Citizens Academy, joined our Crime Prevention Patrol, and is a very active member of our Crime Prevention Patrol. So John gets a lot of credit for helping both of our teams to facilitate this grant through, Chief, you wanna talk about the smoke detector?
I won't speak a lot because it's on another agenda item anyway, but this money for the fire department will go to the smoke and carbon monoxide detector program headed up by Captain Aslan.
Thank you. And as I'm sure you're aware, a lot of our community partners want to support the police department, the fire department, police department, and our crime prevention efforts, but also our local Fraternal Order of Police, our Lodge 10, Kettle Moraine Lodge 10, has taken over our shop with a cop for the last many years, and very successful, great program that brings joy to the community and some of those kids and families that maybe didn't have that opportunity during the holidays. So we'd like, as always, to split this grant three ways, $1,000 to the smoke detector, $1,000 to the police department, Crime Prevention Fund, and then $1,000 to the Kettle Moraine Lodge. So I'd ask that you consider an amendment to the resolution rewarding the remaining $1,000 grant to the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 10. We've done that, that was how it was structured last year. If that's a problem, police department will accept the $2,000, and we'll cut a check to the Kettle Moraine Fraternal Order Police Lodge 10.
I have no issue with that. If we can pass, do we first have to go through passing this, then pass the amendment, and then come back?
I think we can just make the motion.
Okay.
Yeah. Make the motion with the amendment or amend the existing motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion accepting the $3,000 for the grateful thanks of the community and to allocate that to Fraternal Order of Police, the Crime Prevention, and the Smoke Detector Program with the fire department in equal amounts.
Second.
Thank you very much, Alderman Allen and Alderman Zingsheim. Are there any comments or questions? There being none, again, thank you very much to Walmart for this continued support of our public safety organizations here in the City of West Bend. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This next item on our agenda is a resolution accepting fiscal year 2023 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant in the amount of, we'll say $2.8 million. Chief?
A very exciting opportunity to speak before you tonight, and again, formally request this resolution to be considered to formally accept a safer grant from the Federal Emergency Management Associate or Agency to fund the additional nine new firefighters. Again, if we refer back to a couple studies that were done in 2021 or so, both of them established the need for additional firefighters above and beyond the nine additional firefighters we got over the last couple of years. We were very aggressive and worked very collaboratively as a team effort to apply for this very, very challenging grant to get, it's very competitive, I'm sorry, that's the word I was looking for, it's a very competitive grant, and we were fortunate to be awarded that $2.8 million on the last round of grant applications for the year. So with that being said, I'd like to have a shout-out to Jess Wildes, Lieutenant David Keon, Battalion Chief Jeff Gustafson, who all worked very hard on getting this grant application submitted.
Thank you very much, Chief, and to the entire team. I echo that thanks because I know that this was a large-scale effort that has rewarded this community very handsomely, so thank you to everybody who's involved in that. May I entertain a motion accepting the safer grant in the amount of $2.8 million?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'm going to give the motion to Alderman Sparts in a second to Alderwoman Sizer. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chief. Are there being a, are there any questions or additional comments on this resolution? Alderman Sparts?
Could you have the chief just explain the funding over the next three years, how that works?
Thank you. That's a great question. It's a three-year funding. The $2.8 million is spread out over the three years to fund those positions 100% for three years. There is no matching cost to the city, and a lot of the other requirements have been relaxed to encourage cities to take advantage of this award. So as the, as I understand the award, as our period of performance starts in March of this year, it'll actually impact the next four fiscal years because they don't align with our period of performance, so we'll get partial funding in the first and fourth years with 100% funding in the second and third.
Thank you very much for that, Chief. Any other questions for the chief on this or comments? If not, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. The motion carries. The next item is a resolution accepting donations to the fire department. You are just going to be here all evening, aren't you?
It's kind of the fire department show tonight. That's not, that's not a bad thing. Tonight, I also ask you to consider this resolution to accept some very generous donations. Again, I can't thank the community enough for their ongoing support of the fire department, specifically the fire prevention or community reduction, community risk reduction divisions work in smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. I have donations, checks from Mary Close for $50, $50 from Linda Felkner, $50 from Verna Kudick, $200 from Christina Olus, $200 from Amy Hansen, and $500 from Maureen Loret. I would ask you to consider to accept these funds and appropriate them to the smoke detector program.
I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you very much, Alderman Zingsheim and Alderman Allen. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Otherwise, with great thanks again to our community and those who support our fire department and our fire prevention efforts, many, many thanks. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The last item on our agenda is a resolution for acceptance of a DNR grant.
Thank you. Finally, the last resolution I have for you to consider tonight is the acceptance of a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources grant. It's also a very competitive grant. It goes to help offset the costs of fire departments participating in wildland firefighting exercises or incidents. Again, it's a very competitive grant, and, and most, most departments did not get all the things they requested. We requested partial funding for our new UTV and a slide-in unit that equips a unit with a water tank pump and patient litter capabilities to be able to use it. We were not rewarded the funds for the UTV, but we did get the funds for the slide-in unit, which would total $9,500. This is a 50% grant, so it would max out at $4,000. So I would ask for acceptance of that $4,000 DNR grant for those purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you very much, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Any questions or comments on the acceptance of this DNR grant? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as Chair.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Common Council for the City of West Bend. It is Monday, October 7th, 2024, more than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice the time, place, state, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin State statutes. Clerk, can you please confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has been.
Thank you. I invite you to join me for the pledge.
Our pledge begins with the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do recognize a quorum of our common council here tonight. All members present, with Alderman Sparts joining us on the teleconference. Appreciate you joining us tonight, wherever you are. Our first item of business is approval of our minutes from our regular meeting, Common Council meeting on September 16th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingsheim. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Our consent agenda consists of items 2 through 10 in your packet, which were all just done through the different committees that we just had. Any comments, questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Again, any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We have an item appropriate for a public hearing tonight, and this is regarding levying a special assessment for the downtown West Bend Business Improvement District, the bid. So I will now open up a public hearing to address levying special assessments for the downtown West Bend Business Improvement District. So if anybody from the public wishes to address the Common Council on this topic, please step up to the mic and be heard.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
There's a motion by Alderman Allen to close the public hearing, and a second by Alderman Sternig. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our items for consideration tonight is the resolution levying the special assessment for the 2025 Downtown West Bend Business Improvement District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna take up item number 14 next, and this is a final resolution levying special assessments for the reconstruction of 18th Avenue between Paradise Drive and Vote Drive.
Motion to approve, as written.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen, and a second by Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions, discussion? Alderman Butchlick?
Yes. The question would be, the, the properties that are not annexed into the city, obviously they will not receive the assessment, but once they annex into the city, then they will receive that assessment. Is there a possibility of the city annexing in the cemetery property? Has there ever been? Can that, is that possible?
So, in general, there's very few ways to annex into the city. Typically, it's unanimous consent, you know, the property owner, the electors are all submitting the application to annex to the city. There is the ability to do a non-unanimous annexation or to do a, like a referendum annexation. Both of those require, I, I've, I think, I think it's more than, I think it's like two-thirds majority. I haven't looked at that recently, but both of those do provide an avenue for non-unanimous annexation, so can I say that they wouldn't annex it into the city? No. Typically, you're gonna require consent of, or, you know, the request of the person going for the annexation, but it could be a situation where, you know, it has to be annexed for contiguity or something like that, and it's included. Obviously, there's no electors within the cemetery, so, you know, then it's just kind of included as, you know, land. So it's possible. Is it likely? Who knows? There's also the possibility of carving that out as a possible town island or something, you know, but that would take the agreement of the town.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Alderman Berquist?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I guess I'd just like to make a point. The fact that we had many constituents last meeting approach the mic and put on a very eloquent discussion, reference the special assessment and the state requirements. And from the conversation, I believe that the whole conversation boiled down to the... I guess the addition or the relying on the fact that there's a developers' agreement that makes this whole activity bound to the city. I'd just like to point out the fact that the wording of the developers' agreement still says that the city shall... Doesn't mean that they have to, but the city shall go through the special assessment process. I guess the fact that the citizens that are affected and the number of people that showed up that night and more that are here today have expressed concern with this. The fact that it was 34 years ago that this agreement was agreed upon by an administration that has now bound this council to taking action. Action that we have agreed not to take for councils of the future. And just like to have my fellow alderpersons take that into consideration when they make their vote. And, Mr. Mayor, I would request that a roll call vote be made on this resolution. Thank you.
Sure.
So, just to address some of those points, the developers' agreement is not the only basis for doing the special assessment. It addresses why the properties not on 18th Avenue are being assessed. Those properties that do not directly... Are not directly on 18th Avenue are part of that development. A lot of them are part of condo associations that own common elements on that, that about that. So, that's why you'll have properties on Vote Drive and such that are included in the special assessment instead of just properties on 18th Avenue. The other assessments are because the road is being brought up to city cross-section. It is being brought up... It was brought up to only city cross-section. It did not exceed city cross-section. It's very similar, as Max said, to a water main being installed that would service at a certain size, would service the community or the neighborhood that it's being installed through. But, for whatever reason, the city needs it upsized. At that point, the special assessment goes through at the original size. The city pays the difference and pays the additional sizing as part of that project. That's essentially what went on here. I also just... The focus on binding future councils is a misnomer. We do that all the time. We just did that with the protective service agreements. We signed a contract that binds to future councils. We do that with developers' agreements. The binding of future councils is an issue primarily with bonding. There's specific ways with revenue, pledging revenue to a source that we have to follow when it's binding future councils. So, saying that we have agreed not to, you know, do similar things. I mean, we require installations of developers all the time. That's a standard requirement of developers' agreements. And while this was done years and years and years and years ago, it still needed to be brought up to city standard. It just was done in the most cost-effective way possible with a matching grant, you know, where we pay 20% to get the... All of that construction done. So, should it have been done years ago? Maybe. But regardless, it was in the developers' agreement, much like the Westminster one, et cetera. It was part of the development when it occurred.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, Ian, Westminster is the one directly north on the other side of Highway 45, correct?
Correct, correct. That was the one that came up previously when it was being a special assessed. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
So, my understanding is this is the standard method that was used in past assessments. This has happened prior, and it's been done the same way as it was done on all cylinders, past precedence, as far as how it was done.
The... This is very similar to what happened on the first... I mean, basically identical to what happened in the first part of 18th Avenue. What, five years ago or something? There are also other examples of special assessments for curb, gutters, stormwater improvements, et cetera. When... The typical practice is when they already exist, they are then, you know, that is then the city's cost when they do a road project. If it's being brought up to, you know, from rural cross-section to city cross-section, that's when the city typically assesses.
Any more comments, questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I already have a motion on the floor.
You already have a motion. Thank you. I just did a random list gener... Randomizer, so this is completely random roll call vote. Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Sparts.
Aye.
Alderman Zingshaim.
Aye.
Alderman Berquist.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Buchlich.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sizer.
Aye.
That motion carries. Seven to one. Thank you. Our next item is a review of our 2025 annual budget. I'll turn it over to Jay. Ian is going to manage a hockey game with his kid tonight. So, Ian, thank you for being here. Good luck at hockey. Jay.
Thank you, Mayor. Exciting time to present the 2025 budget. You had a chance to take a quick peek at it, maybe over the weekend. You have it now after tonight's discussion. If you have questions, concerns, thoughts before our next meeting, two weeks from now, feel free to reach out, reach out to department heads. Most of the department head team is in attendance today. They all worked really hard on presenting this budget to you, to us, to have a chance to review this evening. I'm going to walk through the one page, the memo, and not focus so much on the actual budget itself. You have that, and I can answer any questions. Our team can answer any questions that you might have if you have some of those already. But I'm going to take some time and walk through the memo that's before you. I did hand it out just before this evening. We can certainly make it as part of the agenda packet for this meeting. Now, the highlights are really many and exciting. This is a really monumental time, I think, for this budget, for 2025. I remember just a year ago, after a presentation of similar components that you're going to see in a little bit, Chief followed, and Chief was introducing a new position that was added to the... Chief Daring was introducing a new position that was being proposed and added to the 2024 budget. During his presentation, he mentioned that there's likely a time in the near future that he's going to come back before you and ask for some additional positions. That's in this budget tonight. You've just heard about the nine new positions in fire that are being fully funded. Those bullets and highlights are included in this budget. Again, a really exciting time for this organization moving forward. Just buzzing through the bullets before you, the instructions timeline, similar process to previous years, one that I think has been refined over the years and seems to work really well with our department head team and with the presenting of it at the first meeting in October to you all. The meetings concluded at the end of September. And then Carrie and her team... Carrie and Collins been added to her team this year, the Assistant, our Deputy Finance Director. Collins been a great addition. He's working really hard on the CIP. The CIP is another bullet that's coming. It's going to be presented to you if everything continues to track in that direction on the next meeting at October 21st. Also, just a reminder, I'll probably remind you again. Alderman Sternig might, as Finance Chair, Mayor Ongart might. If you have questions, if you find something in the next few weeks, reach out. We'd much rather know about them, be able to provide follow-up questions and have you spend some time with the respective department heads or Carrie, myself, in advance of not only the October 21st meeting, but the November 11th meeting for our public hearing and then ultimate budget adoption. The CIP, as I mentioned, is in the works. And then maybe some just bullets. The what's increased, decrease from 2024 to 2025. That's what this sheet attempts to do and really the bulk of the presentation this evening. Health insurance, we're really fortunate to be working with a new broker, USI. USI brought us a new health insurance plan. That plan is going to provide, as you heard during the union ratification of the contracts, a better employee-focused health plan and one that comes to us at a cheaper rate. They also found a stop-loss provider for us at a significantly cheaper rate, and that's what's driving this cost savings to the general fund of 135. The election budget is decreasing significantly for 2025 in 24's proposed budget with the addition of Badger Book machines and multiple elections, one of which is just a short time from us. And yet, this year, we get to conversely decrease the budget because the supplies are going to be down for absentee ballots, and we won't have to purchase those machines. So, a significant proposed decrease in the elections budget. Our net new construction was still strong at 1.24 compared to the 1.48 last year. Not as strong, but one that is relatively solid within the other municipalities that we get measured against. We're likely to see a similar, if not better, increase the next year with all of the development that's going on right now. The... All of the multifamily and commercial development gets added to this. And stay tuned for 2025 with some prospective single-family development that's going to be coming before you very, very soon. Mentioned that the chief's position, three patrol officers, three dispatchers, and a canine officer, similar to last year's proposed budget. At the conclusion of my discussion, Chief will come up and talk through that with you. But I'll get through all the bullets first, and then he'll share some highlights as to the addition of those positions. Certainly can have Chief Noran do the same for the firefighters. I think that one's maybe a little more straightforward, especially having a significant funding source for them. We don't take that lightly. The addition of head count to our organization is something that I know Chief's taken really seriously and tried to find the right time to bring it before you. The SAFER grant covers the 900... 901,000 is the 2025 portion of the 2.8 million that you just accepted a short time ago. Really, a really exciting time and really proud of the team for pursuing that grant and alleviating some costs for our taxpayers for the next three years. Addition of a part-time administrative assistant in fire. Chief has a part-time administrative assistant at this time. He's asking for an additional part-time administrative assistant to assist with the new contract, the additional firefighters, the new contracts that we're going to talk about in a second with some neighboring municipalities as we help them out. There's also two part-time library assistants. Steve Theory is here. You can certainly ask him any specific questions if you need to. Those part-time library assistants were deleted from previous year's budgets, and he's at the point of needing them to be added back. They're part-time individuals, non-benefited, head count to our organization. And the really exciting thing is that he and his team are working on extending Saturday hours. So, by the addition of these part-time library assistants, we're going to be able to sneak in another hour or so of Saturday time that has been requested by his board and many in our community over a bit of a period of time. Ambulance fee revenue is increasing a significant amount, 275,000. That's a combination of a couple of things. The federal law changes that have been made over the last couple of years have returned a higher portion of the ambulance runs that we've had back to our municipality. And then the agreement, the proposed agreements that we are in the process of working through. Ian, who just split, is drafting those right now to work with the village of Kewaskam, town of Kewaskam, and a couple of other towns to help them out with EMS. We'll be able to collect the fees for EMS services as part of that, 275. Fire contracts is exactly that. The EMS contracts proposed with those municipalities. So, we're projecting some additional revenue for those contracts in 2025 that we haven't had the benefit of in the past. I always put this in and one that, I mean, unless we need to apply fund balance to a budget, but proud that this budget does not do that. There is no fund balance needed to offset or to be applied to the 2025 budget. Interest income is one that we increased to 750,000 in 2024. And I remember Alderman Dolnick at the time questioning whether we were pushing that too far. And we were pretty confident based on the LRS projections and others that the interest rate climate was going to be strong in '24. It's held that way, and so we're recommending that it stays stable at 750,000 for 2025 as well. We're going to exceed 750 in 2025, so we're... 2024, so we're confident in the 750 proposal for '25. Happy with the state shared revenue. That was a big part of last year's proposal for 2024. If you recall, that was a significant increase in state shared revenue as municipalities, towns, cities, counties, and villages all work together to pursue an increase in state shared revenues. Last year, we had about a $900,000 increase in state shared revenue. This year, it's an incremental increase, so it's tied to inflation. And so, that increased a little bit, state shared revenue again. And our connecting streets and road allotments are both formula-based increases that as we spend more money on roads, we receive more money back from the state. And it's all formula-based that Doug and Max could talk through with you at great detail if need be. But know that that's an exciting number for us as well. $230,000 of additional state revenue coming our way. We're getting closer to a GIS shared services agreement with Washington County. Our GIS individual left our employment for another organization recently, and we've been working with Washington County to provide those services to, for our organization since then. It's one that John Fellowes from our Development Department is leading us through. He's working with the other departments. That it's really intertwined with utilities and parks and public works and engineering. It's also one that has, because it's been so intertwined, it's been allocated a significant amount to utilities. So, you won't see a line item for $100,000 savings in levy because utility. Ruth will remind me that she's paid her fair share of that position being here in the past. So, it is a savings for us by working with the county, but it won't be as significant as you might just be thinking by eliminating a head count. It's incremental savings for sure. But I know the county is proposing to take it to their... Through their system of committee and county board within the next month, and we'll be doing the same. So, I don't know if it'll be ready for the October 21st meeting or not, but we'll have it as soon as we can to bring before you. The $128,000 for salary market adjustment reflects the one half that's been built in every individual budget. So, as you look through the budget packet, you'll see the salary increases have increased a bit, and those are for the non-represented employees to bring them up to one half of that increase. This 128,000 reflects the second half of that. So, it is included. It's on the one separate sheet that we'll talk about in a bit as far as increases and decreases. But know that this budget with the increase that we're recommending has that for both this year and next year. If we were to do a split, it's both in 2025. One that I think some of the aldermen had pretty candid conversations about trying to get that done a few meetings ago, and this budget would do that. That 128,000 does reflect a three-cent increase. So, if you're curious about what... And we'll talk about specifically the rate in a minute. But three cents of that rate increase is reflected into this $128,000 increase. Again, I think a minor amount to get our employees up to market rate where they should be. Adjustments of a $200,000 to decrease overall general fund from original requests. That's the one sheet that we'll talk through in a little bit more detail as far as what items came in or went away after we had the original budget requests from the departments. And then license and permit revenue, 75,000 year-over-year. So, because of the strong development that we've had and are already receiving proposals for in 2025, we're confident that we're going to gain an additional $75,000 in license and permit revenues in our development department. The contingency line is a modest amount of $105,000. Carrie's not here tonight, but this is the line that you'll see move between now and budget adoption on November 11th. As tit apportionment comes in from the other taxing entities, we use this line item to go up or down depending on where that comes in. We have a pretty good idea of where tit apportionment may come in, but we really don't know that until the other taxing entities... until the other taxing entities deliver that our way. Debt service levy might be a little confusing that it's recommended being decreased by a significant amount, $464,000, and coupled with the next bullet of a really exciting feature of this budget that we're able to spend an additional $1 million on roads. So borrowing an additional $1 million, something again that this body has talked about at some length and our community has called for as far as us spending more money on roads and taking a more aggressive approach to fixing our roads. And I'll explain a little bit how that works, but this budget does include that additional million. So if you remember historically, we've been borrowing, historically the last couple of years, we've been borrowing $2 million for roads and an additional $1 million on an annual basis for all the other departments to divvy up for facility and equipment replacement. This budget adds a million to that road number, so it would be $3 million for roads and one keeping the other number at a million. The reason that we're able to decrease debt service levy is twofold. The first part of borrowing the additional $1 million road doesn't hit a significant payback in 2025. So if you remember back a couple of meetings when Phil from LRS was here, Phil Kossen, he shared with you that $1 million is about 45 cents on the tax rate. That's when it's all in and we've been borrowing a million, a million, a million. That reflecting amount of the million is about 45 cents. Because it's the first year, it doesn't hit us in a big way, so you'll see our increase isn't anywhere near that kind of a number. And because we sold land in TID 14, that's how we're able to reduce the debt service levy, coupled with some debt that is coming off the books in 2025. So we had payments in 2024, no longer payments in 2025. We had some cash that came into us with the sale of Kettle Murray metal products for the land, so we used that for a debt payment for TID 14. And bottom line again, we're able to reduce the debt service levy by $467,000 for 2025. The taxi levy increase, that's a contractual amount that we have. It's still a pretty modest amount, under 200,000 to provide the level, 200,000 on levy to provide a really high level of service for our individuals who need taxi, and that's handled through Doug's office. He's certainly able to talk through any taxi kind of questions that you might have. This next one is a fun one, expenditure restraint. We've talked a lot about levy limits and expenditure restraint over the years. Expenditure restraint is a formula that used to bring in 800,000, 900,000 for the city of West Bend and has been progressively going down over the years from the state. It's one that we've been projecting now for the last few years that we would no longer qualify for. This is it. This is the last year. We will have it on our books. We qualified for it last year, and it's always prospective a year. So when we qualified for it in 2024, it was because of the state shared revenue program that the state put in to give us one year of grace of expenditure restraint. That year of grace is 2025. We're very thankful to have the additional $366,000 for expenditure restraint funding, but that's it. It's the last year that it's going to happen. Our formula no longer qualifies with the addition of the $1 million for roads, the new, nine new officers in firefighters in fire and the officers in the police department. The formula just doesn't work any longer for the city to qualify. So that's something that we've been known is coming. We've been preparing for it, and you'll see when the full budget's built out and the projection that Carrie and I put out as far as the next few years, it'll have that covered by the, mostly by the TIDS repaying the general levy. And then the last, but certainly not least, I won't miss GFOA. That's important. It does include fixing the recommendations that every year when we qualify for GFOA, it comes with a very critical review from the review organization, and they make suggestions to mostly Carrie and her team, but to our organization. She takes those to heart. Those recommendations are included in this budget, and we're really confident that the 2025 budget will again qualify for a GFOA award. The last two bullets talk about the actual levy itself, and it's certainly important. This is a tax increase. It's one that we don't make that recommendation lightly, but are confident that this tax increase of 865,000 or 3.37% accomplishes a lot. All of the items that we've talked about as highlights and many smaller ones that I didn't include for you on a bulleted list, but as we meet with all the department heads, we talk through with them what's changing from '24 to '25, what things are on the horizon. There are a lot of positive features within this 2025 budget, and we get all of that for a 3.37 levy, total levy increase. The rate, if you recall, was 834 before last year when we had the revow. It was $8.34, and it went all the way down to 591. This year, we're recommending the levy at $6.13 or a 22 cent increase over 2024's 591. That number could move a little bit, and it says estimated levy for a reason on the second to the last bullet. That number will likely move as we see the TID apportionment. It won't move significantly, but it'll move some. And then the rate could be modified a bit to a few cents one way or the other based on how the final numbers come in. We do have most of the numbers. This year, we're in a little better position than we were last year at this time with the state numbers that are in. Again, a reminder about the November 11th budget hearing and ultimately budget adoption. If you desire a print copy of the budget versus just reviewing it online, feel free to ask. I do have a couple of them with me tonight. You could just grab it from me. And then if you have, lastly, if you have before the mayor takes over and asks for questions and Chief comes up, if you have any questions between now and even the 21st at our next opportunity to gather and review the budget at a high level, if you have those questions, don't hesitate to reach out. Please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Lot of information there. I have had the chance to sit down with Jay and go through the budget. It was very helpful for me. Matt Cernig was with me when we did that, kind of did tag team one morning, and that invitation is open for anybody. Not to do it with me, but you need to do it with Jay. And certainly if you have questions tonight, let's ask him, but if you have questions tomorrow, set up a coffee or a lunch meeting or whatever and make sure you get your questions answered. A 22 cent increase on the levy is $66 on a $300,000 house, and that's a real number. Our average home price, home value in the city of West Bend, I think, is right around 310,000. So 300,000, it's $66 a year of a tax increase. Like Jay said, this budget does accomplish a lot. It gets our employees to where they need to be competitive on pay, and that was a study that was done several years ago now. And we had talked a few months ago about doing that in two steps. Maybe you do a chunk next year and a chunk in 2026. This budget has it all done in 2025, in one year, getting that gap closed. A million dollars in additional road borrowing is included in this budget. Three new police officers, a K-9, three new dispatch employees. Chief can talk about that. Several, you know, just several things that are accomplished in this budget. So again, I think this is a budget we can be proud of, but I certainly want to make sure that you are all proud of it as well by the time it comes time for you to vote on it. So any questions tonight? Anything you didn't understand in these bullet points or anything you want to dive deeper If not, that's okay. Please, please take Jay up on the offer of meeting with him to go through the document. Chief, you have some things you want to add?
I do. Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Mayor, I asked for the opportunity to present to you tonight, not with any of the understanding that I'd answer all your questions, but hopefully to start a conversation and to fulfill my promise. I told you a year ago that I would be back in front of you in a very strategic and measured fashion, but that we had some staffing needs, and I thought that process helped for us to start the conversations. My door is open. You know where to find me. Please, let's continue those conversations. I'd like to give you a little bit of a higher level look at what our ask is tonight, just again to plant the seeds for you. I'm not sure if Chief Noran is going to come up or not. I know we've had a lot of discussions about the fire department's needs, so I just wanted to start with our needs. And as you know, I made a pledge when I became the chief of police that we would provide excellence in policing, we'd be accountable to our citizens, and we'd be responsive to the community. But I also pledged, and I take it very seriously, and so does my entire team, that we would be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We do not take this lightly. Captain Grenwald was here earlier. He has been a fantastic addition to our admin team. He is as cheap as I am. We'll come in with a bill for 212 that we knew was supposed to be 208, and we don't pay it. We don't pay it. I want to give you my word on that. As you peruse our budget, you know that we're running a lean budget. If you're not aware of that, just like all my partners in our departments here, but if you're not aware of that and you have questions, please ask. You'll know that the majority of all of our budgets are fairly nondiscretionary. Contractual issues, outlay, those costs of doing business aren't something that we pull that number out. We've got quotes to back those up, and it's what the cost is. Tonight, I'm asking you to increase our costs through our staffing, and I'd like to really just walk you through a couple of quick things. When I was hired in '95, Brett, you weren't too much before that, we had 50 officers, 51 officers to be exact. We had no school police officers, and our population was 28,319. That's a 1.8 per thousand citizens, 1.8 officers per thousand citizens, and that's a metric that's used. So I'm going to talk to you more about what I really think is the important needs, but it's important that we talk about benchmarks, and you know we don't enter into this lightly. That is a benchmark used for providing police services throughout the nation. 2.2 is the ratio, is the national average, 2.2 police officers for every thousand citizens. That's sworn police officers. In the state of Wisconsin, it's 2.05 police officers per thousand. In '95, when I was hired, and Brett and I were very young officers, we had that population of 28,000. We had a 1.8 ratio of officers per thousand and no officers assigned to the schools. In 2000, we had 55 sworn. We built, we saw the need. We had 28,250 was our population for 1.94. 20 years ago in 2004, we had 56 sworn, 20 years ago, 56 sworn, 29,130 population for 1.92. 20 years later, in a much different world, a much different world. 20 years later, we have 56 sworn, 32,288, and we have a 1.73 per thousand officer ratio. So we're behind the benchmarks, but much more importantly, sometimes that's okay. There's a lot of recent conversation that that ratio might not be indicative. You have to take in all the dynamics. We run a very conservative budget, and so being 1.73 might be acceptable, except our world has dramatically changed. You've heard me talk to you about the over 4,000, actually it was 4,355 hours in 2023 that we spent on crisis-related calls, most of it guarding prisoners. That's two full-time employees. That's two full-time employees. We have four school police officers assigned to our school. So we still run 56 officers, what we did 20 years ago. We now have four full-time police officers in the schools. We're spending two full-time equivalents working crisis calls, and our calls are more complex. Brett, when you and I worked the road, we could handle the vast majority of calls ourself. It's just the absolute truth. We did. Now, nearly zero of our calls for service are a single officer call. That's an exaggeration. That's an exaggeration. I'm sorry, but a lot of them are not. We're dealing in a much different world. We used to staff parades. Parades were intersections. Parades are now intersections, special response teams, detective bureaus, drone units. It's indicative of the world we now live in. I promised the community, no, we promised the community, my team and you, that we would make public safety a priority, and I'm asking you to stand behind that tonight. There's more, and I hope that we can talk about it, but we're also taking into account our overtime budget. We've had to steadily increase our overtime budget. I also promised you that we'd do that strategic and measured. We knew we needed more than we budgeted for last year, but we didn't want to be reactionary. We wanted to really gather data points. We're still over. In 2023, we were 36% over our overtime budget. We moved it additional 1,000 hours in 2023. We were still 10% over. Those are numbers. That's money, but that's time on our officers. Most of that overtime is nondiscretionary. They're ordered to stay over because of our staffing needs. Since 2016, I'd say we've been very close to crisis-level staffing in our city, asking our officers to work mandatory 12-hour shifts. I've talked to you about this in the past. It makes me worried for them. Tired officers are tired officers. It's a morale issue. It's a safety issue. We need to address that, and we're hoping that an additional staff will address that. What I'm asking for is to move to 60 officers, an additional K-9 officer, I'll talk about that in a minute, and three additional patrol officers to supplement each of our shifts. That'll bring us to a 1.85. It's not extravagant, 1.85 ratio. It's not extravagant, and honestly, and I'm not, I'm being honest with you, it's not enough, but it is a good, reasonable balance. It's a good start place for where we are. It takes the taxpayer and their money and our responsibility to be stewards of their money into account, and we believe that it will make enough of an effect that we can hopefully reduce some of our overtime costs, some of the burden, and more importantly, be prepared to provide and continue to provide excellence in policing to the community, who expects it and quite honestly deserves it. A K-9, I'm not sure how much I have to sell this group for a K-9. I think I've talked to you many times, most of you coming to me saying, "Chief, can we bring that K-9 back?" We had a history of K-9 officers at our department. We have not had a K-9 in over 20 years. Our last K-9, Hampstall, was retired, I believe it was late 2003, for SIR by 2004. 20 years without a dog. Dogs can be an expense, but I believe they're of value. Right now, we are on path to conduct two searches a year within our school district. We have to call other jurisdictions and ask them to use their dog. We have suspects flee the police and put our community in danger. We have to call other jurisdictions to have them come from Hartford or Germantown or the county to use their dog. We have subjects flee, lost on welfare checks, autistic boy up on the north side of town, sticks out in my head, called in a partner agency with the dog to find and provide. So it's not just for the things you might see on TV. There's value in that K-9 program. It's value in us being able to pay back some of our debts and be good partners as well. I'll tell you, we're not entering into it lightly either. Sheriff Schulteis has been extremely collaborative with us since 2022. He and I trying to figure out ways to use our asset forfeiture from the drug unit to fund this. Unfortunately, it's against federal guidelines. We can't use that money. Our MEG unit is the sole custodian of the money, and there's very strict guidelines. We've appealed. We've talked to our congressman. Sheriff Schulteis working with me to try to have those funds utilized, and it's just not a goal. So we'll use those other effective means to combat the drug use that's infecting our community, and we'll focus on our funding of that K-9. The bulk of West Bend PD's, or the police department's capital budget, you'll see the very bulk of it is to provide that initial startup cost for the K-9 program, a squad, specialized equipment. Can't just put them in the back of a car like we might think. It's a specialized cage, cooling, heating, door openers, the training itself. We've got some very passionate officers who've expressed interest, who've helped us with the research. We have partners in the county and outside the county who are excited to hear that we're joining, or rejoining, trying to rejoin the K-9 field and have pledged their support as well. So again, not trying to make the final sale tonight, just trying to whet your appetite for conversations we can have moving forward. So we're asking for the K-9 officer and the three officers to bolster up to 60 full-time. And my staff will laugh a little bit because I'm a little bit about of a rain man with numbers. I like round numbers, so 60 kind of hits me where I sit too, but it's a reasonable ask. The one that I'm sure we're going to talk about, and I'm not naive, neither is my team, about what the future holds for the dispatch center. I pledged to my team, I pledged to you, and I pledged the community that as long as I am the chief, I will advocate extremely strongly. I will have a firm stance of our department maintaining the crucial element of our dispatch center. I've talked to the community, and again, our promise is excellence, accountability, and responsiveness, and as I talk to the vast majority of our community, the responsiveness to them is they want to maintain to them is they want to maintain that level of service as well. Not naive. I know that will be an ongoing conversation, but the reality of the situation is we are maintaining our dispatch now. We do have dispatchers that are working extremely hard. We identified a goal two years ago to work towards never having a sole dispatcher, never having one dispatcher. Times have greatly changed. The calls they are taking are not the type of calls that they took 20 years ago. We take about, we take very close to 50,000 calls, just calls into the dispatch center a year, and we'll have data points for you, so I won't talk in generality. I'm talking in generalize tonight, but I'll have all those data points for you as we move forward. 50,000 calls a year. The average is 90 seconds, but if you're on a critical call, that dispatcher is absolutely tied up, could be up to an hour until the critical incident resolves. And that's just the phone call. She's entering CAD entries. She's dispatching our officers. They serve as our first line of resource allocation, as our, sometimes a frontline supervisor. We've talked about that a lot. I won't, and we have other things on the agenda tonight, but that's where we're sitting for there, and it is not a small thing. Sheriff Schulteis and I have had conversations about this as well, implementing the SENet Next Generation, which I'm very thankful to this body for funding our transition, our transitions moving forward. We look to be launching Next Generation digital dispatching, which means cellular phone calls in 2025, and we need to be prepared. It's just a known that our call levels will increase with the increase of direct cellular traffic. We need to be prepared for that. I thought we were on a good track. In 2023, we had started to limit our times that there was a single dispatcher. Unfortunately, it's over 40% of the time in 2024. We've had some dynamics, extended injuries, extended leaves of absence, but we're 40% of the time, especially on our critical peak times, on the days in the mid-shift, 40% of the time, we're having a single dispatcher. And that, it just can't, we just can't do that to continue to provide that level of excellence. Believe very strongly that three additional dispatchers, assigned to both the days and the mid-shift, and looking for potentially a third power shift, will dramatically decrease the time that the dispatchers are working solely and address the increase in calls that we know are going to happen when we transition to the cellular calls. So not trying to make the final sale tonight, just whetting appetites. Look forward to talking to all of you, looking forward to giving you more of the hard data on that, but that's really just the 10,000-foot view for tonight. So I appreciate the time. I know you've got a lot going on tonight, but I appreciate the time to at least hear where we're coming from, because I know it's a big ask, and I appreciate it. I look forward to continuing to partnering with you, supporting public safety in West Bend, both through the fire department, police department, all my fellow department heads that provide for this great quality of life, but supporting public safety.
Chief, you mentioned 2025 direct cellular calls, meaning a cell phone call will come to our dispatch if they are within our service area?
Correct. Correct. I think Jay was mentioning about our GIS partnership. We're working very hard to verify. So the Next Generation 911 system that we funded over the last two years and worked pretty aggressively to keep that expense down to the citizens will be specific to the GPS. The old technology bounced off towers. You couldn't guarantee where you are, right? Every one of you could put your phone up right now and find out where your spouse or grandkids are with the Find My Phone. If we can do it sitting here, Next Gen can, and it does. We're already running a program called Rapid SOS that identifies GPS, almost pinpoint. So when we launch SENet and Next Gen, and our GIS data is entered, we'll be working collaboratively with the county to transfer. Cell phones will no longer go to the county and then transfer to us. That's old technology. It will come directly to the PSAP that's been designated, and we're looking really very much forward to implementing that, but we know it's going to be a heavy lift for our dispatchers, but it'll be a tremendous increase in service, reduction in response times, reduction in response times for our brothers and sisters in the fire service as well, and just better public safety for our citizens. Thanks for clarifying.
Yep, thanks. Any other questions?
Okay, I'm right downstairs. Or give me a call. I'll come to you, and we'll have, please, send me your list of questions. I'll be ready to respond.
Chief, do you have that undocumented form of all those talking points?
I have a scratched note pad.
Could we get that? That'd be helpful.
Sure. Heck, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll have to put in a translator, though, so you can read my chicken scratch.
Great. Thanks, Chief.
I appreciate the time.
Chief Noren, are you coming up?
If I might.
You might. You bet.
I realize that, you know, public safety, fire department's part of that. We take up a significant portion of the budget, so I want to reiterate what Chief Daring said. You know, obviously, my door is always open. I would love to share with you and any information or answer any questions you may have on a fire department's request. One thing I did want to do in collaboration with Chief Daring is really support those three additional dispatching positions. Obviously, they are a critical part of our operation as well. I'm very proud of the work they do every day. They provide us fantastic service. They're responsive to our needs and are accountable to our chain of command, which is very important. It's one of the reasons we do support, as well as the police department, maintaining our dispatch center here in the city of West Bend. We believe it's a critical resource for us and one that would be best handled maintaining that responsiveness and accountability. Those dispatchers are the first responders in our community. They take the first call. They're a critical link to information and emergencies, and they're a critical link in maintaining our firefighter's safety and giving them proper situational awareness. So I absolutely 100% support Chief Daring in his pursuit of those additional dispatchers. With that said, you know, fire service metrics or benchmarks, as the chief liked to talk about before, are not quite so clearly defined, but we have really, though, is NFPA 1710, which requires the, or which sets a consensus standard for fire department emergency response, and we have ISO or insurance services offices ratings for fire departments. We're very proud right now to serve as a Class II ISO department. I believe that in the, with the additional personnel, we may be flirting with the ability to get to a Class I department. We're short a couple areas, but we're still working towards that as, you know, a very positive goal for us. As far as NFPA 1710, that's the one I really want to focus on because it's the one that's probably the most clearest, and when you look at benchmarks for what we need for firefighters, for your average residential structure fire, so you're talking, you know, 2,000, 2,500 square foot home without a basement, single family, NFPA 1710 requires 15 or 16 firefighters on scene in eight minutes to become in compliance with that standard. Today, our minimum staffing sometimes is low as 11. With the three new firefighters, we're hoping to get to 15, which will get us really close to that NFPA 1710 standard. But it's also important to remember that our firefighters are also providing ambulance service for the city of West Bend and a lot of the surrounding community, and even paramedic intercept services for parts of the community that we're not providing the ambulance for currently. So at any given time, you see an ambulance out on the street. The way we staff today, if there's an ambulance out on the street, the fire truck in that same fire station is out of service. There's not enough people to run both on most days. So that's the importance of getting those extra positions to end the cross-staffing. This, I don't think is a surprise to anybody. It was pretty well documented in both the McMahon and IFF studies in 2021 or so, and I think it is pretty well justified there to end the cross-staffing and get to a minimum staffing level where we can staff the ambulances separately. I think getting there, though, is important for my team at the fire department to try to do everything we can to identify ways, again, recognize that there's only so much money in the city pot, and we all have to share it, and there's a lot of very important things that need to be done with it. Are there ways that we can think outside of the box to try to fund these positions? Obviously, the SAFER grant, a three-year grant to fully fund those positions was one thing that we aggressively pursued, and we were very successful. I forgot to bring it up earlier, but to my knowledge, we are the only Wisconsin fire department to get a SAFER grant in 2020. I think we're into '23, right? Yeah, '23 fiscal year. We're the only community in Wisconsin to get that SAFER grant, so that speaks to the level of competitiveness, I think. Other places we're looking at, obviously, with the EMS and the fire contracts, finding ways to share our resources with partners that are outside. I think that's important, and I think the new collaboration with Kewaskam really pinpoints that beyond the three years of the 2000, or the SAFER grant we got this year, beyond those three years of funding, we look for agreements like that to help us fund those extra positions as we also help them protect their communities as well. So those are the big things. I'm stand ready to answer any questions you have tonight, or again, offer my open door at any point in time in the next couple weeks. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
What other municipalities beyond Kewaskam are we offering this with, or the sharing services with?
The shared EMS services right now is obviously the village and town of Kewaskam, part of the town of Farmington, part of the town of Wayne. I believe that's the extent of it. There was a potential for the part of the town of Auburn, but we were communicated with that, that they were probably going to pursue another option for that area. And then on the fire service contract, obviously, we also provide fire service for Barton as part of our fire service contract, and we also have a fire service contract with the town of West Bend. And we handle probably about 50% of their EMS, as a rough number. Don't hold me to that exactly.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
There's a lot of hard work that goes into putting this budget together, and it's done by all of our department heads and our administration team, but it's ultimately up to you to vote for this budget. And so if there is something in here that you don't like or that you question why the administration or department heads are asking for something, you need to ask, and you need to do that, obviously, before November 11th. Can't reiterate that enough. No offense, but I don't want to hear from any of you after November 11th about something in this budget if you didn't ask ahead of time, okay? Please, go through it, whether you ask that type of a question publicly, like in this type of a setting, or privately. Please get your questions asked, answered. Challenge the team. If there's, if there was something said tonight that you might disagree with or your constituents might disagree with, please challenge the team and come meet and talk with them. I am very proud of, again, the budget itself. I was just looking. There's four different grants that we had on our common council agenda just tonight, so I know that our team is applying for money and anywhere it's available to help lower our overall debt levy. The increase of $1 million in roads, I think, is something we should be proud of. If somebody asks me, "Why are my taxes going up by $66 next year?", I know my answer is going to be, "We're prioritizing public safety and we're prioritizing roads." And that alone is, to me, is worth $66 extra in my tax bill. But make sure that you have that answer to your constituents when they ask, and if it's, again, something you disagree with, make sure that you get your questions asked, answered, or challenged between now and November 11th.
I'll reiterate what the mayor has said as the finance chair. Please take advantage of those opportunities, and part of that is also being fair to the department heads who have spent a significant amount of time over the last couple of months preparing their budgets, meeting with Jay and our finance team to get to the point of arriving at this draft budget. It's in fairness to them as well for the hard work they've put into this budget, looking at it not only from what their departmental needs are, but also from a perspective of understanding this community and the taxpayers in this community. So again, I urge you, reach out, have those conversations, because when we are here gathered to ratify that budget in November is not the time to be asking those tough questions. That's not being fair to this team here before you, but also our department heads who have spent countless hours working on their budgets and have the time available between now and the time that we ratify this budget to answer any questions that you do have.
Yes. I think this proposal of the budget this year is kind of exciting to our constituents because we're answering their number one question. What are you going to do with the roads? Now, we're adding an extra $1 million to make the roads safer and to make sure that everybody has a great transportation to and from their place, and I think this is the right direction. We're heading in the right direction, and we're not just stopping there and saying, "Okay, we're just going to raise the taxes." We find alternate means, grants and stuff, applying for them, and we are finding out that we are able to do our homework, and it's convincing. So I think this is a really exciting time right now for us.
I think that's well said, and there's also areas where we're decreasing, you know, some election-type things, and I want to say that's partnership with the county that who are printing ballots for us now and not charging us for. There's probably other areas and things in there, but the GIS piece is a partnership with the county, you know, and several other areas, too. But did want to share some news that just this morning, the Joint Review Board did pass the amendment to the project plan of TID 16, and so because of a very successful TID 16 off a sand drive, we are going to be able to reconstruct Indiana Avenue from Decorah to Kilborn. And so that, I assume, will get under engineering work in 2025, and then probably road construction in 2026. So that's obviously not in this budget because it's being paid for through a very successful TID, which that TID will also close estimated seven years early because of just a lot of great developments that are happening there. So that's another nice win, so. Any questions? We're going to move on? Seeing none? All right, let's move on. Item 15 is a resolution adopting the Washington County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Is that you, Chief?
Thank you. As the representative for the city's emergency government, I attended meetings June 22, February 20 of '23, and Captain Rullinger attended in my absence in May of '24, representing public safety concerns as we reviewed with Washington County's emergency management. Rob Schmidt led us through the process. Very standardized process. This hazard mitigation plan was last approved by the selected body in 2018. Really focuses on three things: hazard identification and mainly focuses on natural disasters. So lots of talk about floodplains and irrigation lines through farmland, but then really talked about what are the infrastructure pieces that could be in jeopardy, and it's very much led by the FEMA template. So through those planning processes, we're collaboratively with our partners, all jurisdictions within the county, again, led by Rob, and have reviewed it. The third piece is what are the available resources to address those. And again, this is a very standardized plan that's required by FEMA. So I've reviewed it. All the changes are consistent with our past plans. It's a good plan, and I'd recommend approving it as our hazard mitigation plan.
Thanks, Chief. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zinkshaim and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is ordinance to annex approximately 65.2 acres of land from the town of Barton to the city of West Bend, located north of Green Tree Road and Patricia Drive and west of County Trunk Highway D. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Jim?
All I want to mention is that Plan Commission recommended to the council for the approval of the annexation. This land will be zoned, single-family, two-family, park and open space, and then also MXD. The council will be seeing some future plans for that, for the land use and the zoning changes for the final, once it is annexed into the city. And then the town taxes will also be paid by the property owner that we would disperse to the town for over five years. So we do recommend approval of the annexation.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item is a final resolution for the levying and collecting of special assessment under section 66.0703. levying and collecting of special assessment under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin State statutes for the July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025, weights and measures inspections performed by the State of Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection and pursuant to Municipal Code, Section 12.26.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. I assume that's a motion to approve, right, John Sparts?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. A little bit of a delay. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Next item is a resolution of support for small business development grant application to establish a historic district facade grant program. Jess?
Thanks for your consideration for this item. WEDC has put together a new grant program that could award us up to $250,000 to create a fund that we would manage and distribute, similar to our bid facade grant program. This would be specifically designed to contributing buildings within historic districts in West Bend. We have two of those, one in Barton and one in the downtown. So this is part of the application process that we need to have approval from you before we apply. So thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our last item of business is, I actually have three proclamations, and I'm only going to read one of them today. And I don't need a motion on any of these, but every now and then we get emails on different organizations around the country who ask cities to join in proclaiming certain days or months or things like that. So the first one is White Cane Safety Day, which is October 15th this year. And it's a day to recognize the white cane, which is a symbol of people with blindness or severe visual impairment, similar to seeing someone with a seeing eye dog. If you see someone with a white cane walking through a crosswalk or with a dog, you need to stop 10 feet before, you know, the individual. And so that's what White Cane Safety Day is. So I'm pleased that West Bend is one of the cities across the nation who recognizes that on October 15th. Another one is simply called Extra Mile Day, and this is on November 1st. And they want 550 extra mile cities, large cities across the nation, to just recognize people for going the extra mile and personal effort, volunteerism and service, something that I think our city certainly embodies, and happy to sign a proclamation for that. But one I do want to read tonight is Fire Prevention Week. So this is, whereas on 1922, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed the week of October 8th as Fire Prevention Week in commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire and Festigo Fire, which began on October 8th, 1871. And whereas the city of West Bend first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme is Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You. Effectively serves to remind us the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Whereas home fires caused more than 2,700 civilian deaths in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires. And whereas the city of West Bend residents will make sure they are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and therefore, I, Joe Ongert, Mayor of the city of West Bend, do hereby proclaim October 6 through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this great community. And I urge all the people of the city of West Bend to practice fire safety and to participate in the public safety activities of the city of West Bend Fire Rescue Services during Fire Prevention Week of 2024. There was a really nice open house that I attended Saturday at Station Number One, and education, and Sparky was there, the fire prevention dog, and the educational trailer was there, which is used almost every day in the month of October, going around to different schools and things. My high school daughter was with me on Saturday, and she said, I remember when that came to Decorah, and we got to watch the little Lion King movie that they show with it. So anyway, our team does a great job. They had an awesome open house, and Captain Kenny and his team will spend this whole month doing fire prevention awareness training and things like that. So thank you to the men and women of our fire department. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Should we quickly go through our, let's quickly go through our reports before we go into closed session tonight. So our first is a report from our library board.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the library board was held on September 17th after the usual call to order, pledge of allegiance, and we approved the consent agenda, which included the minutes of the last meeting and expenses for August. We received financial reports detailing fund balances and donations. Thank yous this month go out to the Early Risers Kiwanis for a $3,000 donation for programming, and a $5,000 donation to WILS, a library organization that provides action grants. So thank you to them. The library's director's report included staff reports from each of the individual departments and requests for bylaw and policy updates. We've been kind of putting those off. So we were reminded that if we saw something that needed to be changed, to get with them. The board president commented on the recent security audit that we had with the police department and some of the things that came out from that. And we were also briefed on the Eagle Scout projects that are going on at the library. Some completed, some are still to be done. Agenda items for considerations included the 2025 budget update. We just did that tonight, too, and discussion about the city's PTO policy and its ramifications for the library. Both items were voted on and approved. The next meeting is scheduled for October 15th, short and sweet.
Great, thank you. How about the Bid Board Strategic Planning Committee?
If there's no objection, I'd like to go ahead and just take care of
Sure, please.
Three items. The Bid Strategic Planning Committee met and reviewed planning, strategic plan that was developed in 2017 and 2018. We agreed that we need to update and possibly re- refresh that so that it makes more sense. We have a meeting scheduled, and if I'd remembered to print that page off, I would have the date, but it's like next week or the week after. The second is the Bid Board. We met here in Chambers on October 1st at 8:15 a.m. We reviewed and approved the minutes and the financial report. We met with Scott's Landscaping. We got an update on the watering of planters, hanging baskets, flower beds, and weed maintenance. We agreed to look at purchasing chairs and tables for use in Old Settlers Park so that people who want to have lunch there don't have to hope that the stairs are, you know, a good place to set up. So they're currently looking into what those will look like. We received a report from Assistant City Administrator Jess Wilds on the EV charging stations located across from Old Settlers Park. We announced the scheduling for the tree lighting ceremony, which is November 7th. That's a real be there or be square. The first tree lighting after the Main Street reconstruction was completed, we probably had between 4,000 and 5,000 people that showed up and just clogged Main Street from pretty much the theater up to the turnaround. And it was, you know, it was the place to be that night. And it was warm.
Yep.
A nice night. The Strategic Planning Committee meeting was reviewed, and the facade grant committee was, the current progress was updated. So the next bid meeting is in the City Hall Administration Conference Room 302 on Tuesday, November 12th at 8:15 a.m. That's a new location and a non-standard time because otherwise it would have required scheduling around the election. And the only alternate location we have is a secured school site. So the last time we met on an election day at a secured school site, it proved to be problematic. So we moved the meeting to Tuesday, November 12th. Any questions on the two bid items? Not. I'm going to move on to the Tourism Commission. Tourism Commission met last, let's say, last Wednesday. Well, it was October 1st, yeah, last Wednesday, Tuesday, last Tuesday. We got our financial report, found out that we have a relatively healthy room tax currently. We received reports from the entities that receive event promotion grants from the city. We discussed the next steps for the proposed hotel and conference center, should we decide to proceed in that direction. We reviewed the room tax budget, and we assigned room tax promotion grants. We increased the amount of three of the grants. One to MOA was increased by $10,000 over the, oh, you've got the numbers. I'll let you get the numbers from Matt.
If I'm doing the math right here, yeah.
So MOA, we increased their budget by $10,000 for 2025. We increased the Chamber of Commerce by $5,000 for 2025, and the Ben Theater $5,000 for 2025 over their 2024 budgets.
And that money was reallocated from a previous line item that was basically funds in reserve for, should we want to do some initial work on a hotel or convention center.
Great. Thank you. Plan Commission, October 1st.
Oh.
Go ahead, John.
I'd like to do it. It's okay. We met on October 1st, approved our minutes from the 3rd of September. We had a public hearing regarding the flood fringe overlay district by Baller Property Holdings, which is on Main Street. They are redoing the back facade and balcony of their property. That is the southern part of the Gondry Building off of Main Street, the old Gondry Building. That was approved, well, that was a public hearing. And then we had a site plan for the site, and we approved that. That's at 151 North Main Street on the west side of the river. They are putting a balcony in with a nice patio back there and upgrading the garages and just upgrading the property. It'll help with the riverside of the downtown district. We had plan and zoning amendments. We did a plan amendment for 18th Avenue and County Trunk N.N. That is the property on the corner, behind the houses on the corner there. They want to change that to a residential area. So we approved that, and we had the zoning change also hearing for that, or a vote on that, we approved it. We approved a comprehensive plan amendment to schedule a public hearing for the property. We just worked on annexing the night. That'll be done in November. And we also were going to schedule a public hearing for that same property regarding the zoning amendments. And that was our meeting for the Plan Commission.
Thank you. As I mentioned, the Joint Review Board met this morning. Our only topic was the project plan amendment of TID 16 to include the reconstruction of Indiana. That passed four to one. The county was the one vote that was not in favor of it. You know, the comments by Aaron Dahl, who represented the county, were that he thought the road wasn't directly impacted by the TID district. He thought, I think he used the word fishy, that this was added, this road project was added after the TID was created. Phil Clausen was there and told the Joint Review Board that it's very, very common to amend TID project plans. In fact, it's literally in the state statute that you can do that. And the traffic studies and things that we have done on Indiana and the impact that that TID will have on that road is significant. I'm super glad that it passed four to one. Certainly would love to have seen it be unanimous, but at this point, it's passed, and that's what matters most to me. So if you have any questions about that, you can certainly ask me. Any other reports tonight? Anything for the good of the order from any of the Alderman, Alderwoman districts? Yes, Alderman Butchlick?
Oh, yeah. We've had some exciting news. My wife coaches for the West Bend West volleyball team. And yesterday, we received an email from Prep Dig, which picks Players of the Week nationwide. And my granddaughter, it says here, Kylie Altendorf, is a four-year starter, six-rotation outside hitter, who has reached two milestones: 1,000 digs, 1,000 kills in the same week. Her digs were achieved during the Port Washington match. Tuesday at Port Washington, Kylie had 18 kills with eight digs. During the Thursday night match against Grafton, Kylie achieved her 1,000 kills. She had 21 kills with 15 digs. The weekend, the West Bend West volleyball team played at the Lyndleport Sprawl. Out of 32 teams, they finished in 10th place. Her weekend totals for just that one week was 61 kills, 48 digs, five ace serves, and 100% serving. So we're pretty proud of our granddaughter. So that was great news.
That's great. Alderman Allen?
I'd like to put in a plug for Free Coffee Friday. It's your chance to, as an odd district alderman, I'd be Alderman Butchlick, Alderman Burquist, Alderwoman Sizer, and Alderwoman, or Alderman Schmidt. Sorry, long day already. Basically, it's an hour from 10 to 11. You get up, you'll give a quick spiel, should you attend, and then they throw the floor open to questions. And you will get questions, because I'll be there and I'll ask questions if nobody else will. So it's a fun time will be had by all. It's not just free cookie, it's real, or free coffee, it's free cookies, too. So, you know, come early and choose the best cookies.
Great. Go ahead.
Time for one more.
You bet.
I had an opportunity, this is my first in-person return to council since my sudden cardiac event. And this is Sudden Cardiac Event Month. Not to steal thunder from the fire department, but my first call when I came back from my, came back from the hospital was actually to Captain Kenny Aslan to see if there was some way that my some, some way that my experience could benefit others. And we did some looking into it. I, I am one of 10%, and 10% may be a high number, a little bit, but people that have a sudden cardiac event and survive is like 10%. And it becomes even more of an unusual circumstance when the initial response is what's called bystander CPR. When I had my event, I went down like a sack of potatoes and, and I was not breathing and not, my heart wasn't beating. And four random individuals who did not previously even know each other came together and immediately jumped on it, gave me CPR, 9/11, 911 was called and they dispatched a fire truck and a med unit. And they kept me alive until, until the fire truck and the med unit got there. They handed off. And then the four individuals went back and, and did a whole day's volunteer work for Revitalized Milwaukee, which was the event that I was participating in or attempting to participate in. So, it was, today, they, those four individuals received American Heart Association Heart Saver Awards, and that's for people to give CPR and save a life. So, I didn't realize how, how rare this was. At almost every time I've been into a doctor since I left the hospital, somebody random, a medical professional, not, not one of the people that I, you know, was there to see, stopped by and said, "I just wanted to meet you because what happened to you is so rare." And I'd never seen anybody, so. So, it's, it's on the news. It at least made it to, I think it was TMJ 4.
I was going to say, Mark, you're being a little modest about this event today.
Just to give you an idea of what's involved, every one of the people that contributed to saving me or providing care at the hospital is on this pillow, which I now get to clutch between my chest and the seatbelt. So.
Well, between Mark and Captain Kenny, they put together a really neat event down at Station 30 in Milwaukee. And Jay and Jess and I were there. All four television stations were there. The four bystander CPR heroes were there. They had all of the med unit and the first responders, fire department there. They had their, the chief of Milwaukee Fire Department and his assistant chief, more importantly, our chief and deputy chief were there. It was, it was a really neat event. It was very touching. Mark gave a really good, really nice speech. And I told the four bystander CPR people, I said, "Mark's my friend. You saved my friend's life." And it was, it was touching for me to be there. I appreciate the invitation and it was very well done. It, it'll be on all four stations eventually. I know WISN said they were going to call and interview you over the phone. And so, I assume the story will be on the news maybe over the course of this month because of, of the sudden cardiac arrest awareness month. But you did a really nice job today and it was an honor to be there.
Thank you.
Alderman Berquist.
I just wanted to reiterate the fact that the citizens need to remain vigilant in the construction on South Main Street and all the areas in District 3. It's getting better. I saw Hawthorne was open for traffic and Butter Nut, they put paint and lines on today, so that should be coming up soon. And just to remain vigilant and remain calm when you're driving through Paradise Drive. It's getting there too.
Very good. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to, like to announce a grand opening for Indulge Salon Suites, which is on Barton Avenue, about a block and a half north on Barton off of Main Street. It's on October 18th. It's a Friday between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m.
Jay, anything?
Sure, I'll share two quick things. The first is an issue regarding PFAS at our airport. It's really an, an item that's come to our attention through the Department of Military Affairs and the National Guard. They're taking it very seriously at the national level and the local level. Our team is a part of it as well, many department heads, and certainly our airport manager, Mike Shaw, have been involved. But it's, it's a, it's a real situation that, that they're dealing with, with PFAS in, in the groundwater and soil near the armory, National Guard, and our airport. So, know that that's going on and that they're taking it seriously and will be taking care of it. But one that'll be with us for a bit as they work through that process. And the second item is just a heads up. The mayor's mentioned the Joint Review Board a bit today. Obviously, that was really good news to get Indiana moving forward over the next two years. A heads up that the next meeting of the Joint Review Board is likely to be in regards to the Plan Commission action that took place at the, at the last meeting regarding that residential subdivision that, that is being proposed. They're requesting a TID to be created. So, TID 14 will be, or TID 17 will be before us before we know it. And then we do have another potential development proposal at TID 18 is probably right, right on its heels. So, some additional industrial and commercial land coupled with residential, much-needed residential land, that some additional single-family lots coming our way. So, stay tuned for that and just an early heads up.
Great. Thank you. I don't have anything tonight, and so I will read a motion and I'll, I'll read it and then I'll ask for a motion. We do have an item appropriate, appropriate for closed session tonight. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn in a closed session pursuant to State Statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, specifically a revised land sale contract for a portion of tax parcel 11191030006. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. I'll call the roll. Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Berquist.
Aye.
Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sizer.
Aye.
Alderman Spartz.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zingshaim.
Aye.
Thank you. We are now adjourned in the closed session.
You might mention that we're not. You might mention that we're not.